Let me call to order and go through the, first we'll do the pledge of, well, first I'll do the opening statements followed by the pledge of allegiance and then follow by some announcements. So before we begin, I would like to state that the Planning Commission hearings and meetings are open to the public in person and via Microsoft Teams streaming application. Note that a meeting or hearing information can be found on the Town and Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations for the Board of Trustees about land use matters in the Town and Monument, and each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review. This includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself now for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in the matters before us tonight, please say so now. Additionally, for those who are attending tonight's public hearing meeting via Microsoft Teams, if you wish to speak during the public portion, please ensure that you utilize the option to quote "raise your hand" and have your computer microphone ready to turn on. Please speak directly to the Commission into the microphone so that your concerns are heard and to ensure timely and fair hearing. We ask that all public comments, including those online and here, be limited to three minutes. And if multiple people have the same comment, to please only keep to one comment. Only one person speak to that same subject. All right, so thank you. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. If everyone could please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united on end of this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. And I'll just turn real quickly to Mike, there he is, all right, for a quick announcement.
Tough day for me. Just want to announce my resignation as interim planning director. So, and introduce Sheila Booth as the Town and Monument Planning Director. She has 20 years' experience in planning. She has a degree from Texas A&amp;M, a master's degree in planning. So she's done work for the city of Frisco, Texas, the city of Plano, Texas. She's worked for Fountain, she's worked for El Paso County. Recently, she's been the administrator for the Colorado American Planning Association, and so has a tremendous amount of experience. You're going to see her flourish here tonight, do a great job tonight for us. Also, we are going to retain the services of Jacobs until such time that she feels comfortable to not use them anymore. So Sheila, would you like to make a statement?
Just thanks for bringing me on board. I'm looking forward to it. Please don't hold the Texas A&amp;M thing against me. We have been losing all our games, so enjoy that part. But yeah, I'm happy to be here, and we will be keeping Jacobs until I can get a staff because right now it's just keeping the department running. But they've been really invaluable to me, so I'm trying to catch up to speed on a lot of the cases. But I'm here, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me.
All right, thank you very much and welcome. All right, with that, we'll turn to a roll call to get the meeting started. Staff?
Chairperson Will Helmy?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Trujillo?
Here.
Commissioner Hours?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Egley?
Here.
Commissioner Collins? And for the record, Commissioners Peck, Zernikow, and Light are absent.
Thank you very much, and moving on to the approval of the prior meeting's minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion on that?
Move approval of the minutes for the September 12th meeting?
I will second.
September 12 or October?
It was October 12.
October 12th meeting.
Second.
Chairperson Will Helmy?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
All right, thank you again, and we'll move on to the presentation for hearing meeting on the items. The first being Monument Junction East Number Two Preliminary slash Final Plat. And for a presentation, I'll turn to staff.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
I have called up to the screen the Planning Commission Preliminary Final Plat for Monument Junction East filing number two. My name is Sean Snow, presenting this evening on this topic. We have first vicinity map for this plat. Existing zoning within the approved Monument Junction Phase One Preliminary Final PUD. Monument Junction Phase One Preliminary Final PUD was approved by the Board of Trustees on March 21st, 2022. Woodmore Water and Sanitation District will provide both water and wastewater services for all development within Monument Junction. Project summary: Just over 22 acres, 146 lots, plus 12 tracks, plus three streets. Lots range in size from 2,800 square feet to just a little over 6,300 square feet. Tracks A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, K, and L contain trails, open space, landscaping, signage, drainage, mail kiosks, and public utilities. Owned and maintained by Monument Junction Metropolitan District Number Two. Track H is a director's parcel for Monument Metropolitan District Number Two. The plat is consistent with approved Monument Junction Phase One Preliminary Final PUD. All applicant code standards are met. Comprehensive plan information, I'll go through this. Connected by sidewalks and trails, served with existing town special district or metro districts that provide water and sewer services. Community amenities encouraged. Promote work, live, and play with residential use being subordinate to the non-residential uses. Development particularly along the I-25 corridor should preserve views to the west and include a landscape buffer along the highway to reduce noise and light in adjacent land uses. Center should be served by controlled access onto arterial or collector streets and should minimize curb cuts. Development that strives to integrate two or more land uses such as residential, commercial, and office on one lot or within a subdivision with a defined pedestrian orientation that establishes and encourages connectivity to adjacent uses and supports all modes of travel. Housing should complement and be subordinate to the primary non-residential land uses. Developments that include a total, sorry, my screen here is giving me an issue here. Developments that include a total cap on allowable square footage of non-residential uses and housing density that can be accommodated by the transportation network and accommodates easy access to goods, services by foot or by car. So all of this was considered during the development process and the creation of this present plat as related to the comprehensive plan. Hold on a minute, my screen is not advancing. One moment. From the code, there we go. Section 18.02.250 and 18.02.060. Monument Junction East filing number two is consistent with the Towns Line Development Code. The preliminary final plat conforms with the section of code because it proposes a harmonious development and lot pattern that is compatible with the approved Monument Junction Phase One Preliminary Final PUD. It also provides adequate access from Jackson Creek Parkway to all lots and tracks. Jackson Creek Parkway is the main collector road servicing Monument Junction, and all lots will be accessed off local streets. Local streets will have sidewalks that will connect to the main sidewalk trail along Jackson Creek Parkway, which in turn will connect to the community trail system and parks. The lot size, lot coverage, and setbacks ensure continued compatibility within the community. The single-family residential subdivision will have varying design and facade treatments which will make each lot unique. Lastly, the plat provides adequate utilities. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of Monument Junction East filing number two preliminary final plat based on the findings that the proposed plat is in conformance with the review and approval criteria for a preliminary final plat as outlined in section 18.02.250 and 18.02.260 of the Town of Monuments Land Development Code. All of this information, of course, was provided to Planning Commission in the associated staff report. This slide outlines the entitlement process that has gotten us to this point, which include initial approval from the Board of Trustees back in June of 2020, and additional approvals on March of 2022 this year. And of course, now we have the present plat within that PUD for tonight's hearing item. I won't go through all the language that's included on the screen here, but this information is provided for the Planning Commission and for the public to know that within our code gives lots of information on the criteria we use when reviewing plat, preliminary and final plats. Land Development Code Section 18.02.250 referenced earlier, here's all that information. As well as the final plat, Land Development Code Section 18.02.260 criteria we use to perform this review. The current slide was given at the request of Planning Commission, which gives approvals. Staff, of course, is recommending approval. And there are also the other alternative motions, which include approval with conditions or denial. So I have left this slide up if there are questions, and I'll just leave it here on this slide as well. The applicant is here as well, if you have any questions for the applicant or for staff.
All right, would the applicant, wherever they are, care to make any additional statements or as is? Okay, thank you. All right, so at this portion, we'll open up for public comments. Briefly, if you've been here before, we limit those public comments to three minutes. If someone's made that comment that you've already wanted to make, we ask that, we just minimize repetition, and we don't make another comment. So I'll first turn to the folks in the audience for public comment. And when you do come up to make a comment, we have a sign-in sheet right there, usually there. Please, just for the record, state your name and address and put a login with the same. Make your comment, and we'll go on to the next. At the close of the public comments, after we do through virtual as well, we'll have the applicant rebuttal, and if the applicant has feedback saying that questions or comments, that will be addressed then. So we take all the public comments first. Applicant follows with comments and feedback, and then we'll close the public comments section. All right, so with that, any public comments from the folks here in the audience? All right, and I'll go ahead and look online. It looks like Drew's online as well. I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand right now, but just to confirm. Drew, do you have anyone who's raising their hand?
Mr. Chairman, I have what you have, and it looks like at this time we have no answer.
Okay, we'll just allow another few moments. So if anyone online would like to make a comment, now's the time. Please utilize the raise-your-hand function within Microsoft Teams. And seeing none, all right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close. Well, let me just check back here. Seeing none, I'll close the public comments portion of this application. So with that, I will turn to my fellow Commissioners for any questions, comments that we have to the applicant, to ourselves. Please, sir.
This is Commissioner Egley. I had a question for the applicant regarding your traffic study and really how the impact of the build-out in this phase of your development will impact the improvements made to Jackson Creek Parkway from this development to the north up to 105? If you could talk about the timing and the impact?
So with this plat, Steve Slasher, Classic Homes. Commissioners, with this plat, it will be adding traffic to Jackson Creek Parkway. And just to kind of give you a rundown where we're at in that process. So there's interim improvements that are out right now to the town for comments that will access, create the access for slope side for the filing to plat in that area there. Where we at far as in the design, as we take the area from Fat Tire all the way through the intersection, we're in the last stages of the design there and working through. And hopefully by December, we'll be able to send those out to jurisdictions. So that T in that intersection is complicated because it's El Paso County coming off Noelwood. Jackson Creek Parkway is the Town of Monument, and then C dot. So with that process, estimate is probably six to nine months. So far as timing in the community, far as where we're at, far as putting residents on these lots and working through putting the utilities and everything in, the first lots, which would be the four-square lots, that would be at the end of 2023. So we... Yeah, let me explain that. The plat. Plat would be good to look at. So Commissioners, the 76 lots is the first lots, which would be on the, this might help, which would be on the east side up against Billy Center and the Villas. Does that kind of give you an orientation where that would be? That would be the first lots that would go on the ground? Yeah, it's in your packet there. So as those are split up, it's kind of, you got to put them together. So those 76 lots would be the first that we would actually take vertical and take to market, which we're anticipating the end of 2023. Far as the interim improvements that get you inside that area to the east side of Monument Junction, we should have mid-month those comments back from Jacobs, and we've already started putting those out to bid. So as soon as January, February hits, that's when we are going to start with those interim improvements. The town can probably speak a little bit more to where FHU is on the ultimate design there. But as soon as January, we'll start the interim improvements to access that area. We'll still be working through utilities, getting water, sanitary service and everything. So those lots won't even be the market to the end of 2023. By that time, we'll have the interim improvements in, which would be a right turn in, so we'll give access to that area.
Inside there, we're looking at that top northern track.
Five different tracks that are inside there. Is that correct? Yes.
Okay.
All the tracks.
Yes, sir.
All the way to L.
Yeah.
So my concern that I have already, as Commissioner Egley had mentioned, this is Commissioner Vice Chairman, Commissioner Trujillo. I'm looking at 18.02.250 and 18.02.260, both with the subcategory C5, adequate safety and efficiency to the public improvement. My question really is, it's already been approved, everything is there in place, but my major concern is, is we have a 264-unit apartment building that's going just west, or correction, north of Walmart. We've got another set of buildings that is doing, or just off to the north section there. The timeline with all that construction is going to be binding. It's going to cause inconvenience to the citizens of Monument. What is the timeline for that first track that you can tell us right now is when it's going to happen in relation to the other construction? And that may be a question to staff to say, how is this going to lay out to prevent the inconvenience to the public on Jackson Creek Parkway? Mr. Stimple was here at the last board meeting and mentioned that there was a $1 million bond associated with that project. How is that actually going to affect and assist the public on Jackson Creek Parkway?
Well, I can speak to a little bit too, and that goes along with where we are in the process. The FAs have been recorded for all the interim improvements and the final improvements, and bonds are in process of being issued. So as soon as we can start construction, we're starting construction on those roadways well before. And we have great concern too, we don't want to put future citizens in those homes either and have anything that's going to add to or cause, you know, emergencies or anything like that.
So Steve, would you say then a good condition that we should put on this is that until the road improvements are done, no further project should go forward until those are in place to protect the safety of our citizens?
No further project through the Town of Monument?
No further project associated with the build, because again, it is a safety issue in relation to Jackson Creek Parkway.
And that's why we're putting the interim improvements in.
So until those interim improvements are in place, would it be fair to say that a condition to the go-ahead of this final plat should be in place?
You don't have to ask the town, but I think with the FAs and everything in place, that creates that condition that we have a security.
The FH, the FH for the first plat in place to move that along in that, so that creates that condition.
And again, I just want to make sure that we get it on the record, that we're identifying that that condition is very clear. Because again, what's going to happen is there's going to be loopholes, and then all of a sudden, for whatever reason, the FA does not go through. Now that road condition is not completed before we start getting all that traffic on Jackson Creek Parkway.
Yeah, the FH, the FA is actually recorded, it's gone through, and the bonds are pulled. So everything is in process for the interim improvements there.
So when is that going to happen? Any idea?
The interim improvements?
Yes, sir.
That just goes back to when I addressed it, Mr. Egley's comment. Those are going to start in January.
Okay.
Yeah, and then timing-wise, where with what we're going to, on four-square, we're taking those to market, that is 2023. So if you go from when we take that to market to when that is, those actual residents are built and ready to move in, that's a six-month process.
So January 2023?
Upstream, 2024.
That's correct. So January 20, and I'm just trying to figure out the timeline. January 2023, we start improvements on the roadway. Okay, building will start when on this project here, on just that first northern half? When would it start building?
You're, it'd be the fourth quarter, you'd end the third quarter, fourth quarter.
2020?
2023.
Okay.
It'd be right about time we take those to market.
Perfect. And then completion, what are you expecting on that one?
Again, six months.
Okay, perfect. That's what I need. Thank you, sir.
Other Commissioners? Questions, comments?
Commissioner Hours, one question I have, is some of these homes that you're going to be building there, are they very similar to what you see when you drive down Powers Boulevard and just south of the hospital?
Yes, the ones that are close to Powers there, the shared driveway.
Where some of them are very close, backyards are very close to one another. Okay, now, the question I have related to that, with, in terms of the pricing of those homes, are those relatively or some degree less expensive than some of the other homes that are being built in the area? And the reason I ask this question is because we have families in this city, young couples that want to buy homes, and I have no problem with that design if they're going to be able to afford to move in there, okay? I'm just wanting you to confirm that I have some sense of what the market is.
You do, and I think if you have a good sense of the market, we'd all like to know. But where the market is headed, we'll drive that price a little bit far as where we are in 2023. But they are, and that's what we've done with filing two with the duplexes, which are half that, and then the four-square, creates a little diversity in the housing side there, where it creates that stair step to homeownership. So as you're, it's a little less square footage, Mr. Hours, as you can see, as those houses are with the shared, a little bit smaller yard to be able to create that stair stepper into homeownership for people.
The young folks don't like yards anymore, I don't think, anyway, so.
Never know.
About how many of those units will there be roughly?
There's 76 lots in the four-square.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, and between ourselves, any questions or comments? I think we're good. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Could you pull the motion up, please, so I get it right? Just before I make my motion, I want to make a statement to town manager. I understand why I make this motion, and some of the folks in the audience will, because I don't want to be publicly attacked in front of the Board of Commissioners again when I incur with something and are misread and then attacked. I want to make sure that everybody understands because I'm approving this motion and that I do not particularly believe that we should have all the housing that's being built on the west side. And I had that same comment in 2020, even though I was totally misquoted at Board of Trustees meeting by the person that was representing the developer. Having said that, I move that Planning Commission recommend approval of Monument Junction East filing number two plat based on the finding that preliminary final plat comprised with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monuments Land Development Code 18.02.250 and 18.02.260.
This is Commissioner Egley, a second motion.
Chairperson Will Helmy?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you. Yeah, sure.
Question for staff, real quick on this one, John, Mr. Foreman. One of the things I got a question about is, as we identified during this segment, we're very clear and adamant in regards to that bond going forth and the improvement of Jackson Creek as this goes online by 2023 July timeframe. I just want to make sure that it's very clear and noted to the Board of Trustees that identifies that we have looked and we identified the possible shortfalls associated with Jackson Creek and that there is a segment or a timeline associated with what we're identifying, what you're proposing, and what Classic Home has already put up in these bonds to make sure that that is not going to be something that is going to get curtailed in the later stages. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move along to item number two tonight. Monument Ridge West and East Annexation and Proposed Zoning. I will turn to Mr. Snow for presentation.
Okay, everything's ready here? So this proposal, proposed land development case combines, for the presentation purposes this evening, I've combined the two staff reports that the Planning Commission received related to Monument Ridge West Annexation and Proposed Zoning along with Monument Ridge East Annexation and Proposed Zoning. It's combined for one presentation for the Planning Commission's review this evening as well as the public and public comment. So we begin first with the site location of the western parcel. This is west of I-25, south of Palmer Divide Road, road also known as County Line Road. 91 acres in size. This is part of a so-called flagpole annexation that will include a sequential annexation of 71 acres on the east side. a sequential annexation of 71 acres on the east side of Interstate 25 called Monument Ridge East. So what you're looking at right here is the Monument Ridge West parcel. To comply with state annexation requirements, this proposal will include annexing a portion of I-25. The flagpole begins approximately where 8th Street meets I-25 just south of Monument Meadows Mobile Home Park. Annexations are regulated by state statute, which require that one-sixth of the perimeter distance of the parcel to be annexed to be contiguous to the existing town limits. This slide shows the parcel on the east side of I-25. That's also south of Palmer Divide Road. This one, the 71 acres in size. This is part of a sequential annexation that I just mentioned that will follow the adjacent annexation of 91 acres on the west side of Interstate 25 called Monument Ridge West. So these are just across from each other. Just showing you both slides so you could get oriented where this is located. To comply with state annexation requirements, this proposal will not extend boundaries of the city limits of the Town of Monument more than three miles in any direction from the present municipal boundary. The annexation of the territory meets the requirements of and fully complies with the applicable requirements of the Annexation Act and Section 30 of Article 2 of the Colorado Constitution. The statute also requires there be a community of interest between the property's planned use and the town. Contiguity can suffice for this to exist, but also the future residents can be expected to shop, work, socialize, and recreate within the town. These requirements have been found to exist by the Board of Trustees during their meeting in September. Monument's Annexation Plan and Growth Area Plan, which is the map that you're looking at here on this slide. That was, that was adopted in February of 2017 as part of the Town Comprehensive Plan, envisions annexing this area of El Paso County. In addition, the passage of Resolution 22-2022, a resolution adopting the Town of Monument Three Mile Plan for 2022 aligns with the current proposed annexations. So the slide that you're looking at, those kind of yellowish colored parcels, those are the those are the parcels that are envisioned as part of the town's annexation, 2017 Annexation Growth Area Plan. And the ones we're looking at are at the very top of this map there where you see the El Paso Douglas County line. El Paso County has the area currently zoned primarily for commercial uses and large lot residential. By annexing these areas into town limits, Monument will have more control over decision-making authority over what development occurs and will ensure that it complies with the Monument Land Development Code. In addition, these annexations will continue to enhance the sense of place of Monument by defining a firm municipal boundary at the El Paso Douglas County line. I'll just discuss some of the zoning. Proposed zoning, the future land use map from the Comprehensive Plan envision this, envisions this area primarily as mixed use, which is the intent of the applicant. The applicant proposes a zoning designation of residential attached for a majority of the site, a land use that allows for a mix of housing options, including but not limited to single-family attached and multifamily residential dwellings. This zoning category has a height limit for any structures of 35 feet. A smaller parcel at the southwest corner of I-25 and Palmer, Palmer Divide Road is envisioned as commercial center zoning. And of course, the map that you're looking at on the right is part of, that's the map I was referencing that shows the map from the town's comprehensive plan, the reddish parcels at the top are the land use categories I just referenced, mixed use. And that goes down a little bit into the business campus land uses on either side of I-25 just to the south. More discussion on proposed zoning, the present Town of Monument Land Development Code already contains strong controls for the residential attached and commercial center zoning categories. And the applicant is not seeking any concessions to the code. The Planning Commission and Board of Trustees would also review any preliminary final plat during future submittals. While the Comprehensive Plan defines mixed use as a land use designation, the code does not have a true mixed use zone district, so additional discussion concerning what mixed use land, land use in relation to our ACC zones may be warranted. In addition, buffers or transitions could be created between existing larger residential lots or clustering development where appropriate to provide more open areas. An annexation agreement, as outlined, annexations are conducted in accordance with state statutes. The hearing before the Board of Trustees on September 19th, 2022 established that the area is eligible for annexation and set the Board of Trustees hearing date of November 7th originally, 2022, to further consider the annexation and an annexation agreement. The applicant continues to collaborate with staff on the agreements. We actually have ones for the west and east side to ensure the success of the project with no adverse impacts on the town. As applicant will discuss, the annexation agreements cover many topics that must be fulfilled as a condition of the annexations, including addressing the proposed street network, types of land uses, parks, water, sanitation, traffic, environmental regulations, schools, and any other associated issues related to special district governance, which will also serve this area. The agreements are nearing completion and can incorporate other issues that may be of concern. The agreements will include a sketch plan to help visualize proposed land uses. Staff review criteria. Staff has reviewed the subject application and analyzed the applicable criteria and statutes. Based on this analysis, staff concludes that the proposed project is consistent with all applicable requirements and adequately addresses all criteria. Staff used the Monument Development Code Sections 18.01.130 and 18.01.140 related to jurisdiction and purpose as related to the Comprehensive Plan. As well as Sections 18.03.130 regarding zoning annexed land and 18.03.140 Sections A through E regarding rezoning. In addition, staff relied on the Town of Monument's future land use designation map from the Comprehensive Plan, as well as confirming that these parcels are part of the town's Annexation Growth Area Plan. The following slides give the information that I just referenced from the code, including Section 18.01.140. I won't be reading through all of this fine print, but these are the sections from the code. This also is 18.03.1.140 Part D. I will read through this information. Planning Commission and Board of Trustees may consider the following evaluation criterion considering rezoning applications. The compatibility of the rezoning proposal with the surrounding zone districts and land uses in the vicinity of the site of the rezoning, including the characteristics of the existing neighborhood, the applicable area and bulk requirements, and the suitability of the site for development in terms of onsite characteristics. The impacts of the rezoning upon expected traffic generation and road safety, availability of onsite and offsite parking, and the availability of adequate utility services and street access on the site. That the land proposed for rezoning or adjacent land has changed or is it is changing to a degree that it is in the public interest and consistent with the intent, purpose, and provisions of this chapter to encourage different densities or uses within the landing question. That the proposed rezoning is needed to provide land for a demonstrated community need or service such as rezoning will be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies contained within the Comprehensive Plan. That the existing zoning classification currently recorded on the official zoning map is in error. Number six, this one I bolded because staff did rely heavily on this as related Comprehensive Plan that the proposed rezoning is in, is in conformance or will bring the property into conformance with the Comprehensive Plan goals, objectives, and policies and other related policies or plans for this area. This relates specifically to the town's Annexation Growth Area Plan. Number seven, that the adequate infrastructure facilities are available to serve the type of uses allowed by this change of zoning or that the applicant will upgrade and provide such where non-existent or under capacity. And the impacts of the rezoning upon expected traffic generation, road safety, availability of onsite and offsite parking, and the availability of adequate utility services and street access to the site. Conclusion and recommendation. As stated, the annexation agreements are not yet complete. In addition, staff is ensuring that the consolidated landowner's submittals and any updated application materials are complete. However, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed zoning associated with these annexations at tonight's meeting so the annexation agreements can be completed. I should note they are generally complete. It's the zoning piece that is, remains in question. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a motion to approve the, the proposed zoning categories of residential attached and commercial center, which will be incorporated into the annexation agreements. In addition, staff also recommends using the present meeting to obtain the Planning Commission and the public's input on the proposed annexation agreements through the following framework. The two annexations would bring the land into Monument under the conventional town zoning code. The applicant landowner is willing to agree to limitations of zoning rights under the conventional zoning code as referenced earlier in this presentation related to the residential attached and commercial center zones. The applicant landowner would like to present an overview of the contemplated uses. The applicant landowner would like to get input from the Planning Commission and public regarding requested concessions from the developer. This slide indicates, as requested, the different types of motions that the Planning Commission could take this evening, including approval, approval of conditions, denial, and continuance. That's the presentation. Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make some additional comments?
Yeah, I will go ahead and pull up his presentation.
Good evening. I'm David Whitehead. I represent the applicant for both annexations. And get a slide up. It's two annexations, the west one and the east one, as, as Sean has indicated, along with the initial zoning. And we're looking for and so if you could go back to that first one, Sean, but just your personal, I sure. So this shaded area is showing the entirety of the two annexations together, the flagpole and the 25 acres on the west side of the interstate between the interstate and Beacon Light Road. It, it specifically excludes Beacon Light Road, and I'll explain why in a second. And then the east side comes across for continuity and gets the acreage on the east side. And that acreage also includes Monument Hill Road, which I'll also speak to. But that's the entirety of the area for the two annexations. There is an out parcel of the property right there at County Line Road that the Woodmore Water and Sanitation District owns is excluded from the annexation. So it'll be a, an island in the middle of this. They did not want to participate in the annexation. With this process, we did a mailing to everybody that touches the proposed annexation boundary. By statute, they're allowed to join the annexation, and nobody has opted to do that by notification to the town planning group. So the annexation boundary is staying a, as you see. Sean, if you'd go to the sketch plan for me. There we go. So this is the actual property that is available for zoning and development. It is excluding the I-25 and the Monument Hill Road right of way. And you'll see too that it still excludes the Woodmore Water and Sanitation District property. The zoning is residential attached. But you'll see the, the gold color along the properties to the east, which are on Doughwood and to the, and south around the corner up against the very northerly end of Misty Acres Boulevard as it exists today. We're agreeing to a minimum of a 9,000 square foot lot, even though the RA Zone District allows us 5,000 square foot lots in an effort to create a density transition from the people that own the properties to the east coming into our property. The green single-family residential at the 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. And there's a, it's hard to see, but there is a shaded area in that green that is the studied and identified wetland area approved by the Corps of Engineers. We've completed a, a wetland study and that's identified on the plan. We do not have any intent of improving anywhere near that or disturbing it. We don't want to go through the 404 permit process. It'll stay as a wetland in open space. In the pink or the purple area, I'm semi colorblind, but you'll see in the very northwest corner, there is another piece of wetland that is there. And it is in our property a little bit, but goes out underneath the Monument Hill Road and into the highway right of way. And the State Highway Department had to deal and work with it when they did the northbound off ramp improvements and so on. So in that area, we're looking at eight to 11 dwelling units an acre. No apartments. And we're agreeing to no apartments or condominiums in any of this development, and we're willing to put that in the annexation agreement. So it becomes a zoning restriction on, on that. We don't want apartments on either side of the highway. The purple on the west side is approximately 20 acres. 18 acres. The blue is the commercial area, commerce, the commercial center up against County Line Road, and it's approximately seven acres. We've specifically excluded Beacon Light Road and County Line Road from the annexation. The Town of Monument is not in the RTA. And there is a currently RTA project to improve Beacon Light Road and County Line Road, lower the intersection, pave Beacon Light Road, realign Beacon Light Road down to the south where the water tank is and so on. Turn lanes and so on. If we annex that into a municipality that doesn't, that isn't part of RTA, it kills that project. And it's a, it's an El Paso County funded project. So we've specifically stayed away from that so that that project can move forward and those improvements can occur. And those improvements will not be, there'll be a, a tax burden on the adjacent people as the way RTA is, is funded. So we'll, we'll have a tax burden on that property for that. Up to RTA tax for that, but there's no burden on the Town of Monument for that work. Similarly, on the east side of the interstate, we've excluded County Line Road from that. That, that will stay El Paso County. We're going to extend Misty Acres Boulevard up. Its alignment is between the purple and the green is the way we see it today. And it will intersect County Line Road where Beacon or where Monument Hill Road intersects County Line Road today. And it's currently identified to be a roundabout. CDOT wants a roundabout. El Paso County wants a roundabout. Our traffic study supports a roundabout at that intersection. And that will then, we still need to, to work with staff, but Beacon Light, or excuse me, Monument Hill Road comes into the Town of Monument as a part of this annexation, which is a road that you folks would need to maintain. And our plan is to vacate that and eliminate the roadway. And the traffic will come up Misty Acres Boulevard. And that road will just stay as open space buffer between the I-25 right of way and the development. As you're aware, CDOT in their process put up wildlife fence all the way along that right of way between us and Monument Hill Road, which the Highway Department gave to El Paso County about three years ago. So currently Monument Hill Road is a, a county road rather than a state frontage road. And so that piece of it, we intend to vacate, and that's a road then. Yes, it comes in with the annexation, but it'll end up being a road that we don't ultimately need to maintain. Same down at the bottom, we've excluded Misty Acres Boulevard as you. As you can tell, Misty Acres hasn't been very well taken care of. And we didn't want to bring that into the town of Monument as a maintenance burden, even if we have to go in and fix it up. So that's the reasoning behind the annexation boundary in some of the areas. On the east, we talked about annexation agreements. There are two currently. The west one for this flag stem, which is the interstate and the property on the west. The property on the west would get water from the town of Monument and sanitary sewer from the Monument Sanitation District on that, on that side for water and sewer. Black Hills Energy provides natural gas to both sides. Monument, Mountain View Electric provides electric to both sides, and we have commitment letters from them already on that. On the east side, the entire property sits inside the Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. They will be the provider of water and sewer. And they've given us a commitment letter for approximately 515 equivalent, single-family home water taps. And we're only proposing 422 roughly in that area on there. So we're, we're not going anywhere near the, the limit of water that they have. On the west side, the plan is to support the lift station that's currently being talked about and the new water tank and extend the water main up the realigned Beacon Light Road and the sanitary sewer up Beacon Light Road once Beacon Light Road is realigned. We're not going to put it in the existing alignment. See, what else do I have? We anticipate trails, open space connectivity to existing El Paso County facilities where they're near enough to connect to. And as I said, stay away from the wetlands, no apartments, no condos. We don't, we're not proposing that. We're more than happy to have that in the annexation agreement. I think with that, I'll stop and I'm happy to answer any of your questions at this point.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll just have you sit down for a little bit. We'll move on to the public comments. And it's just a little exercise you can have tonight. All right. So with that, I'll open, and of course, I'll start in the galley here to public comments. Again, we'll keep it to three minutes each. I'll time you. But if anyone would like to make a comment, please step on up and put your name, address on the record and do so in the same in the logbook. So go ahead, whoever wants to start.
I'm Steve King. First off, I'm not against the annexation. The problem that I have is the annexation and rezoning simultaneously. I think that this site has a lot of natural features. It's heavily treed. It's got a lot of topography changes. 422 units on this site is going to cut down a lot of trees. If this goes to RA zoning, that will be done administratively, and it won't come back for public hearing. And other people will be making the decisions for this. This has got wildlife crossings that dump across from I-25. Again, the east side's got the wetlands area, and I get they're not going to do anything with that. But part of the criteria is, because we'd be taking this out of the future land use maps, and the future land use maps state that it's business campus and mixed use. Our comprehensive plan talks about mixed use as being residential subservient to commercial uses, which this would not be. And also talks about commercial uses being at the freeway exits. Right now, I see that there is no imminent need for rezoning. There's several projects that are going on right now in town. And if we keep taking these land out of the land use, future land use maps, you know, what happens in the future? I'm not saying that this shouldn't be some type of residential use, but where these 9,000 square foot lots are on here right now are zoned for 20,000 square foot lots. And RA does allow for 5,000 square foot lots. I have a lot of concerns with the, with the trees and the natural features. This is the gateway to Monument. It seems like whenever we do make these changes, we end up losing lots of natural features. There are petitions, by the way, I think they're probably in your packet from every single adjacent landowner on the east side protesting this, which will require a super majority vote at the trustee level. And I think that, again, I think that annexation is fine. I think that the, that the applicant, the landowner, needs to spend some time sitting with the adjacent neighbors and try to come up with some kind of plan rather than just rezoning this now. And then they're just going to be subject to whatever the planners decide and how the infrastructure and everything lays out on this. Obviously, we got to deal with Beacon Light too, because it's a dirt road. And I get there's plans for that, but you know how the plans work. We dealing with that on Jackson Creek Parkway right now. So I think it's, I think it's, I think it's premature to change the zoning. I think annexation is, is a good thing. I think our code says, in fact, I'm sure it does, that there's 90 days available to change the zoning after annexation. And I think that that's the avenue that we should take here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead. Next.
I am Paul Strange. I live at 20290 Doewood Drive. My property backs up to this east side. We already talked about the wetland. One of my concerns is that my property is a half an acre, and almost every one of ours are. And so he's talking about going, putting duplexes into 9,000 square foot lots behind me. So that means I'm going to have like two to four homes right behind my home. I'm more concerned about the wildlife and the water. He says he's going to protect the wetland, but if you look at that property, the topoc, the topography of the property, the whole thing slopes into a V, and that's where the water starts and that water feeds all the way to the South Platte River. That's why I got a jurisdictional determination. I personally think I forced that before he did, because pre-COVID, the former owner tried to subvert the county and brought in big tubes and tore up the wetland. He brought a tractor in and he cut it all up, and he got in trouble. And Holly Williams had to intervene and have him pull all of his equipment out of there. Now here we are after COVID, and this is all just kind of being dropped on the community. I personally went door to door to every home, and I had other community members help me create the petition that you all have. Not one person in our community is for this idea. As we talk about it more, we think annexation is probably a really good idea for the town. But rezoning is a bad idea. It's going to cause more crime, more traffic. And there's a lot of wildlife in that field, by the way. There is nesting hawks that live in one of the big trees right on the, the east side of the wetland. I watch them every day. They're nesting hawks. There's also a den of coyotes that live out in there. There's other, all kinds of animals. I'm not even going to go into the treble field mouse that I know people talk about. I can't, I can tell you they're, they're there, but I'm not a scientist to tell you more about it. Wildlife is a big issue, but moreover, none of the community wants this. And I don't think we have a need for high-density housing. This area is not a high-density area. I moved here for the serenity and the peacefulness and the view. That's all going to go away. And there's some big trees out there. If this, this proposal goes through, they're all coming down. We need to protect it. We need to protect our environment. And even though he says he's not going to mess with the, the wetland, I'm telling you, it's going to have runoff. It's a runoff all over into that wetland. And once he starts disturbing it, now we're messing with our water, and our water's a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please.
1016151 St. Lawrence Way. Good evening. I want to first start off by saying, devil's in the details on this. I'm going to ask you guys to open up a little bit. There's some history behind all this. Back on November 1st, the Board of County Commissioners were presented with an emergency item, which is actually a land use item regarding the annexation of land areas located east and west of I-25, which is being presented. The commissioners are required to review the annexation, the annexation impact report. Apparently, that report was sent from the town of Monument. Would like to know who sent it, who filled it out, because there are six key parts of that that have to be met that the commissioners have to review. I'll get into that in a minute. However, the county commissioners postponed the meeting because they felt it wasn't an emergency item, and they didn't have all the facts together, and they haven't heard from, they didn't get community input. So they kicked their meeting to review this to December. What's the reason why? They're being smart about it. They're taking their time. They're getting all, they're collecting all their data. The impact report, there's a couple of things on there. It talks about adequate provisions for utilities, police, fire service, and protection. By building on the east and west, you're now going to stretch response times for our police, fire, emergency units to cover even further. So I don't think that that meets water. They're talking about, they're going to have to put a pump station on the west side to send water up parallel to what now is the dirt road. Let's talk about the traffic. 412 homes altogether. Rule of thumb, the guideline is 7.5 trips per home in the traffic studies. That's 3,165 trips total for all these homes in this area where you cannot improve the roads. Additionally, with all the other development going on, these areas that they're wanting annexed, which I think is a bad idea, because right now, what they fall under all the codes, there's only one code just in, in that district, C1, which is no longer, it's obsolete. So now the developer would have to go back to the county commissioners and ask for rezoning under their guidelines, which they'll do. They'll waive the fee for that. What these areas are zoned for are R5, residential rural. That's five acre lots. RS 20,000, that's 20,000 square foot lots, single-family homes. CC, commercial community district. Combinate retail sales and service establishments. We need retail. We need businesses to generate revenue and, and tax purposes for the town of Monument. We don't need more homes. We don't need residential attached homes.
I missed a couple. I'll just ask you to start to run.
This is going to affect traffic. This is going to affect the water. This is going to affect the natural characteristics. These, if you look at that blue line, that what's going to be some kind of commercial property, I could tell you right now it's going to go in. The 12th or 13th gas station for Monument, that's what's going to happen. Period. This area is not zoned for residential attached, so if we annex it into the town, great. But if we rezone it to meet our standards, we're taking away from smart people at El Paso County Commissioner level who's looked at the local area and said, this is what it needs to be. RS 20,000, RR5 to match the density of what we have in the community now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robin Wright, 19814 Doewood Drive. I'm on the east side of that area. And just to give a feel, because for, for the entire area, if you, the applicant knew when they purchased that property, what it was zoned for, five acre lots and basically half acre for our single-family homes. So if I'm a developer and the applicant, I know, hey, I'm going to get this property for this much money. And then I need to put X amount of houses on there at X amount of profit per house to be able to then make, you know, make it good. So now what we have is, hey, we, we can't get that from El Paso, so we want to move it into Monument, which annexing probably a good, so we're in charge of it. However, in the pink area, you're changing the whole total look and feel of the entry of Monument, because that's all townhomes. That's that whole pink area. So if you're looking coming up Monument Hill from the south to the north, everything there is a half acre lot, up to an acre going up through Woodmore. And then if you look at Misty Acres, everything there is a quarter acre to a third of an acre. So that's 11,000 to 1400, 14,000 square feet. So that's the look and the feel coming up Monument Hill. You can put houses in through all those trees. You can make it look and feel like it should, you know, the rest of the topography. When you start putting in 5,000 square feet and putting in townhomes all through the pink, everything changes. Your look coming into the community is not Monument. You're coming into a major commercial area. Okay, that's not the look and feel of Monument Hill. It's just not. Also tell you that everything up there is black sky. There is not one street light through Misty Acres, through Doewood. We don't like streetlights. Everything up there is black sky. In fact, most of the residents, they don't even put their lights on in their home at night, because it's totally black. And the stars up there are, you can see, you can see like you're out camping. Okay? You put all those townhomes up there. Now you have parking. Now you have streetlights. You have all this lit up, which gets rid of what, why we're up there. When they talk about wildlife and, you know, a hawk, it's not just that. When they fixed I-25 and there's an underpass, they put an entire bridge to focus everything to go underneath the highway and to come through that area. We get herds of 60 and 80 or more of elk. And they come across, they come right across that area, and they go north into Douglas County on that plateau there. So it's not just a little wildlife. It's major herds of elk coming through. And the last thing I'll just say is just the structure. I just want to kind of say a structure of the board. I like the, the public comments. But I think one thing that we can add is when the applicant's done, and then sometimes when you guys discuss or there's a rebuttal from the applicant, new information comes up. And as soon as new information comes up, the public should have the ability to, to address new information. Because then that new information's critical, and we could have opinions on it. So that's just a structure thing. So thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. Keep coming if you have comments to make. Come on up.
Doewood Drive, our association, 54 homes right there, east of this property in question. Every one of us bought our property with an RS 20,000 or west, every one of us. That was our expectation. It's been that way for many, many years. I like the idea, and somebody mentioned it at our meeting on Monday, of annexing this property puts Monument in control of the setting, but you guys stand in the gap. You're standing in the gap for us. Now we got a lot of development going on, and we've got assumptions on Jackson Creek. We got assumptions on many of these developments. They're all guesses. They're the best guesses we can make. When you put a guess on top of a guess on top of a guess, the infrastructure, the police, the schools, the traffic, it just multiplies the risk associated with this. And just brief discussions with the, the people making the proposal, the owner of the land, I have no objection. It's their land. They, they should develop something. But we're asking you guys to push us back to the table and let our community talk to the developer about that green zone right there. Because that would be a nicer transition than their proposal. Thank you.
Can we just get your name on the record? I'm sorry. That's all right. Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else here in the audience? Yeah, come on up.
35 True Vista. You guys are all pretty smart. You can all do math. You're looking at putting 412 houses on that. You're looking at 3,650 square foot lots. Doesn't come anywhere close to the 20 foot, 20,000 square foot lot. You're going to put multifamily. They're going to be living each five, you're going to have five-foot set packs. People are going to look through their kitchen windows, see what their neighbors eat. Pretty sure that's not what you envisioned for this community. That's not why y'all moved here. When you add in the fact that Caliber is trying to get the result in front of Palmer Ridge and put in two hundred and sixty-four apartments there, you're going to load that road up. Their traffic study shows that it's going to be right in, right out. That's going to bang right into Palmer Ridge twice a day. Now, when you start looking at that traffic count, they're going right in, right out. That means they can't go left down the 105. They're going to be coming north to county line. That's your road. That's Monument's road. Again, seed out on one side, private owners on the other. Guarantee you, you're not going to be able to widen that. You've got the wildlife fence there, as previously mentioned. There are significant elk herds that run through there, because everything north of county line is a conservatorship. Those areas are forever going to be the way they are. At least for your lifetime and mine. So you think what you want the flavor of Monument to be? That's all I've got to say, because you can see everything looking like Jackson Creek all the way up to county line. And I don't think that's what you want.
Just so you know, there's, there's no dialogue between at this time. But go ahead.
Things are relaps, but pretty sure that everybody up here wants the flavor of this town to be what it is. And like the gentleman said prior to me, at night, it is amazing to sit up there and not see streetlights. The light pollution, unfortunately, from Castle Rock has moved south. Let's not move it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Yes, please.
Evening. Craig Johnson, sixteen forty-five Capodero Court on the east side. I would just like to draw the attention of the, the commissions here to the, the master plan itself. If you look at, there are two, two bullets that state what the vision of that master plan really centers around. The first one is commercial development. So folks talked a little bit about the commercial development and the need to bring that here, and that's good as long as it's compatible development. The second, the second bullet was a vision statement of keep the small town. And that's what you've heard here tonight from all the residents who live in that particular area. And again, the, the gateway to the town of Monument, keep the small town feel. Doesn't mean you can't develop. It means compatible development. Compatible development. The houses there do not need to have the Washington DC density of housing, which I have lived in. And it's, it is not, it is not the same feel. So I would ask the, the commission here, as you go through the deliberations, and you take all of this information in, and there is no rush to decide. I would ask you to take some time to go back to the, to the first few pages of the master plan, which specifically said, keep the small town feel. Bring in some development, but do it responsibly and compatible development. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, come on up. Thank you.
Name's Bruce Sidebottom. We own the office at one nine nine two five Monument Hill Road. Just want to note that I'm an adjacent landowner. I did not sign the petition that they're talking about everybody signing. We're within spitting distance of the interstate. Our office is heavily influenced by the noise from the interstate highway. The urban corridor is going to move north. It's inevitable. This land is going to be developed at some point. What I've heard here today sounds pretty low intensive compared to what it could be. If we wait five or six years, that land gets more and more valuable. It's going to be more and more expensive to develop it and pay for the improvements in order to cover the, the cost of the improvements. So my advice would be not to wait too long, because there's going to be a lot of pressure to build bigger, more intensive urban stuff this close to the highway. So if you want to preserve the small town feel of Monument, and you want to preserve the open space that we've got up there now, I'm afraid that there's going to be more and more pressure to build even bigger and more, and, and, and how do you say it? More intensive stuff later on in the future as the development progresses north from Colorado Springs.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, so we'll pause for the, the in-person. I'm going to look online. And I see a couple of hands raised. Drew, if you can move any one of them up.
Moving up. I'm going to go with Lamond, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. And Lamond, you're on. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Catherine Lamond, formerly O'Keefe. I live at two zero three, two zero Dewa Drive. And I wanted to, my husband and I both wanted to just echo the sentiments of the majority of our neighbors that just spoke. One of my biggest concerns is the traffic. And when I look at the traffic impact assessment that has already been conducted, there are some gaps, including the intersection of Dewa Drive and county line. That intersection was not part of the analysis. Dewa Drive is a major artery for the neighborhood on the east. And I live at that very first lot on the north side, on the, on the northwest side. And we see all kinds of traffic flying through here. We have all kinds of cars break down from I-25 coming up the hill that can't quite make it. But I think that in addition to the, the proposed number of units and people being crammed into this area, which I also, we don't agree with the size of the lots that are proposed. Just the number of people and the amount of traffic, and how are we going to ever turn left back on to, to go westbound on county line from Dewa? It's going to be very dangerous, even more so than it is now. So I think, you know, the rezoning, I, I am not happy about. Annexation, fine. I think there can be more responsible development. But I think the impact, the traffic is one of my biggest concerns right now. And I just wanted to bring that point up.
Okay, thank you. All right, Drew. I'll stick with the folks online. There's a lot of hands. Next up. That'd be Abbott.
I'm in, uh, Santa Abbott next, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
All right, Santa, if you can go ahead, unmute yourself.
Sorry.
And go ahead. That's all right.
First of all, I just want to say that I've heard several of your meetings now these last few months, and I really appreciate the thought that the planning commission goes through and the questions you ask everyone. Like, to me, that's just so refreshing to see. So thank you for that. I was listening to what everyone was saying and jotting some notes down. And I think for me, the biggest heartbreak is that the citizens surrounding this area do not want this. The other thing that's upsetting is the wildlife, the wetlands. And one thing I absolutely love about Colorado is a night sky. And these citizens have that now. If you're going to grow this area, that, that's all going to go away. We're just simply going to drive more and more people out of town. I'm still really upset that the Board of Trustees approved the apartments in the middle of town and Monument proper on Jackson Creek that you guys recommended and denied. They went a still ahead and approved it, and we have that going in. And I think that for me and, and the, the group of people and citizens I know, we're still struggling with that. And I would hate to have this come up in the queue again. I'm for annexing it, but against the rezoning. And I really wish, I feel like the gentleman that was speaking on behalf of what he intends to do, he sounds super sincere. But I would go back and, and have a forum with the citizens and come to an agreement that way. I don't think it's wise to wait. I don't say we put it on the shelf. But we put some thought into this before we make too quick of a decision going forward. And in terms of the infrastructure and traffic, all of that is going to quadruple. And that's just something I want you guys to consider. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. We'll stick to the folks online. And Drew, if you can move up, whoever's next. I mean, I see Ms. Turner here, or anyone. It doesn't matter to me.
And whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Brandy, whenever you, good. Okay, you're unmuted. Go for it.
Yes, thank you so much. Brandy Turner, two zero six five Bobcat Valley Court. I have one question for staff that actually came up when we talked about this on Monday at the Board of Trustees meeting. The flagpole space, I don't understand that. I'm wondering if we could maybe get a little bit more clarification. What I heard was, of course, there's going to be the flagpole space, and here it is. But just, I'm sure there's other people who don't understand what it is and why we need it. So maybe if we could get some clarification on that. And then, the, excuse me, the next thing was really more directed towards the applicant. Please don't take the community having concerns about the project as not wanting the project. We have a lot of pride in our community, and we ask that you have the same view, even though you may not live here. It is our community. We'd like to invite people in. But we'd also like to invite people in who want to have pride in our community. So the suggestion to annex but not rezone, I think is a good start in taking the opportunity to actually speak with the citizens. It's not that we don't want it. It's, it's just, it's our town, and we want to take pride in it. We want it to look like we want. We expect it to. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brandy. All right, Drew. Any others? I mean, I see Ms. Lamond still has her hand up. I don't think we'll go back. But anyone else new online that has their hand up?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any new hands.
Okay. All right. So I'll just return to the in-person. Does anyone have public comments at this time? Go ahead. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm Joel Lusby. I'm at ten eighty-three Knight Blue Circle. My only question is, and I guess it's in the way of a comment, has anybody done a study of how many homes we actually want in Monument and different parts of Monument? I mean, are we just going to, you know, go as fast as we can, just providing homes to, so we can get as many, as much profit as we can as we go forward? It just seems like we would want to take a step back and, and do a good study of, okay, we're going to have all these homes down here. We're going to have Willis Springs. We're going to have Jackson Creek. We're going to have all those homes. There's thousands of homes going in. And to take land up on the ridge there, it's fairly pristine right now. And it's a beautiful entry into our community and just build more homes. It just seems a little bit, you know, I don't want to say short sighted, but, you know, if, if we could just see a study of what our long-term goals are for this town and where we are going to end up in fifteen years perhaps, you know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, return in-person? Folks with in-person public comments to make? All right. Oh, well, real quick. All right. You get a minute.
Robin Wright, nineteen eight one four, Dewa Drive. Also in the pink, I just want to point out that this says a height of thirty-five feet is what's proposed right now when you put townhomes through there. On the last lot five, it was forty-something feet, but that measurement only according to the, went only to the midpoint. So really, it was higher than forty because you're midpoint of the roof. So if you're having, again, a wall of townhomes there, now you're even obstructing view of the mountain. And it's probably going to be higher than thirty-five because that's the midpoint of the roof. So these, this is something definitely we need to take more time on. And again, when the applicant bought it at twenty thousand square feet, that, those are half acre lots. He knew, hey, if I could get half acre lots all the way through here, I can turn a buck and I'll make my profit. I'm going to make a bunch more if I put townhomes. So it's a money deal. It's not just the beautification. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, final call for folks in the audience. That was your minute. Final call for folks in the audience. Okay, and seeing none, I don't see any others online. So with that, I'll close, well, I'm not going to close it, but I'll ask the applicant if there's any comments or rebuttals, so to speak, to any of the, yeah, that, that's what we're looking for.
So in, for I-25, the reason for the flag stem is the statutes in the, at the state level require that the perimeter of the annexed area touch, one-sixth of that perimeter has to touch an existing town boundary. And so the I-25 right of way, down at the bottom, you'll see the, where Sean's got the arrow going. The blue on the west side is the existing town boundary. That portion of I-25 that's in our first annexation is one-sixth of that first annexation boundary touches the existing town, and that's in the flag stamp piece. It's the same thing Fountain did with the racetrack down south when the racetrack was built. There's a flag stem up the interstate. State Patrol keeps the law enforcement. And so that's not a burden on the town by annexing the right of way. And then the second annexation touches, gets its one-sixth by touching the first one. So that's the purpose of the, of the flag stamp piece, which is the right of way of I-25. I agree that north of County Line Road on the east side is Conservation Eastman. On the west side is Douglas County Park. So it's not going to develop. It's not going to create a residential or population center that can serve commercial at the interchange. It's, it's the demographics that are done by these companies don't see with no population center, any significant one until you get to Larkspur, any kind of need put commercial, significant commercial at the intersection. We're not putting duplexes on nine thousand square foot lots. Everything in the, if, can you go back to the other one, Sean? So everything in the green and the gold is single family residential homes. It's not duplexes. It's not townhomes. It's single family residential that we're agreeing to there. And I think that's, that's really all I have to, to say.
Okay, all right.
I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, that's all right. So.
I'm, I'm born and raised and lived in this community my entire life.
Fair enough. All right. Thank you.
If that helps.
Appreciate it. Okay. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment section. So we don't have a back and forth on, this is just. So I'll ask real quick, how many homes will you build? Are you planning to build on the west side?
Single family residential. They're custom, they're family homes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay. All right. So with that, I'll close the public comments section. And as you saw before, we're going to have some dialogue with the commissioners here and then also with the applicant. So with that, I'll open it up to my fellow commissioners. Any questions that you have? Yes. Commissioner Green.
Um, I have several questions and comments for staff. So Sean, if it's okay, I'll talk to you, but anybody on staff can answer these. Um, so just so everybody knows, annexation is regulated by state statutes, not by, it's not like subdivision or zoning or local org nexus.
Correct.
It's not an entitlement. You are not entitled to be able to build certain things before you get into the town of Monument.
That, that's.
So this is not an entitlement process. Now, because it's not, we have annexation agreements that are proposed. We can ask for anything in those agreements, anything. We can ask the applicant to rebuild downtown. We can ask for whatever we want. Now, they don't have to do it. They can stay in the county, but just so everybody knows, you can do anything with an annexation agreement, correct?
Correct. It's a back and forth. That's part of what this is, this discussion.
And the state statutes require that the applicant do an economic impact study. Uh, somebody mentioned that it gone to the county.
Yeah, the, the annexation impact report.
I did not get that. I did not get an economic impact report, and I don't know how I can vote on an annexation when I don't know what the economic impacts are.
Not sure about the economic impact report, but the annexation impact report.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with them. They, they want to know whether this development is going to be an asset or liability to the town. Now, you know, it may be somewhat of a fi- financial liability. Doesn't mean it's a bad project or that you shouldn't, uh, annex it, but I don't have that information. And I don't know. I don't know any of this. Also, um, after looking at an impact study, which I haven't seen, I would want to use that to find out what kind of annexation agreement is being considered, and I have no idea. I mean, since an annexation agreement is a contract, you know, are you asking the applicant to maybe do more improvements and the RTA is proposing for beacon light? So if RTA is planning to pave two lanes, we could ask the applicant to do something more, to put in the drainage. I, I feel personally like I don't have any information here.
So some of the information you're referencing, the, the annexation impact report, we do have, but the this, the attachments that we gave you and your staff reported it. I, I looked at it more as getting you information that would help inform the type of zoning that would go here, since Planning Commission has the purview over the zoning discussion. So a lot of, there's a lot of paperwork we have. So
And I would like to see it.
But I do understand you don't have the annexation impact report, but that, that was provided to El Paso County, but uh, that is not, was not something that was given to you in your packet. You are correct. The economic impact report, I'm looking at all of the information that applicant was supposed to provide first, for the town code and state statute. And I'm not seeing something specifically called it an economic impact report. I see things about service plans and an annexation impact report, but economic.
I'm calling it economic, and it is primarily who is serving. You're, you're right. However, it does ask questions that normally are not or cannot be asked in an entitlement process. For instance, how are you going to pay for your project? So there are some economic, there is some economic information to it. And I, you know, I, this may be a great project, but um, this is housing um, is an expensive thing for a town to take on. And, you know, whether it's streets or infrastructure or police, and I don't know what we're getting back from the applicant. You know, what, what is, what's the applicant's part of this contract?
So that, that definitely is part of what we're looking at this evening as, as part of what, part of that conversation. If the Planning Commission wanted to add those types of conditions to any type of annexation agreement, that's, that's, that's definitely in your purview, and you could have that discussion tonight, certainly.
I, I'll also say that I, you know, I appreciate you taking it to the Planning Commission because I don't think under state statutes you have to. I think you can just take it straight to the Board of Trustees. So I do appreciate that you're, you know, letting us look at this and talk about it, but what am I voting on?
Ms. Ms. Green, on, in your bylaws for the Planning Commission, it does recommend that we bring it to the Planning Commission.
And, and it should be brought. I agree. Yeah, I don't even know, I don't even know what to say. I feel like I'm, you know, I've got a half staff report. And um, the, the zoning that it, it sounds a little intense to me, but at this point, I'm, I'm more worried about approving something that I don't know, you know, what's going to happen here. Also, um, I just want to point out that the resolution, point twenty-two says no additional terms and conditions are to be imposed.
Yeah, I saw that from, you are correct. I saw that from your email you forwarded to, to Sheila and me earlier. And um, I don't have a quick and easy response for that one. The information that we have from Town Attorney relates to the annexation agreements, which we, you have full purview to have a discussion and put on any conditions or, or concessions that, that you want. So that part of the resolution, it's possible it's an error.
Okay.
And as far as the other pieces that you feel like you don't have enough information, I could take, apologize for that perhaps. I, I, we have so much information. As you saw, my presentation was, you know, twenty slides, which was pretty long presentation. I knew it'd be a long evening. So we, I tried to consolidate a lot of the information you have. The, the discussions between the applicant and me, you know, it, it's a, there is a lot of, lot of information definitely on the, the back and forth. I call it the letter A through Z discussion because I started with letter A and I asked all these questions with subsections that went to letter Z. So I mean, there's definitely been a lot of back and forth. But if you feel like you haven't gotten enough information, it's, it's noted. And I just want you to know, we have the information. If there's anything else you want, that you feel like you haven't seen, we can certainly provide that to you.
Okay, I, I, I do feel like I can't vote for this at this time. But I will end with that.
Thank you. Keep going, Commissioners. What do you got?
Commissioner Oars, uh, first question I got, who owns this land? You're the owner? You're the owner? Okay, I just wanted to make sure the owner was here, be hearing what is being said. I have a number of questions. I, I devote a lot of attention to our comprehensive plan, uh, when I'm setting up here because our planners are very good people. They have a responsibility to look at all the details. They bring things forward to us. They don't often dive in to the comprehensive plan. But under urban growth and area boundary annexation plan in the comprehensive plan, uh, under Community Concepts, item two, it says, consider contingents areas where there's a po- potential for non-residential development. Uh, the area north of the existing town limits to the county line creates a gateway into Monument and is suitable for non-residential development. But then the other questions I have, so I just make that statement as, as to what the comprehensive people that put together the comprehensive plan in twenty seventeen. That's what they were looking at. But then I look at the future land use map. And on the fa- future land use map, I've got a couple of concerns. Business campus is part of what's being annexed, but I don't see that anywhere in the documentation that's come forward to me, that this area is mixed use and business campus. So I, my question to staff would be, why isn't that shown as this area is business campus and mixed use?
So the, the, the future land use map conceives of the, it just put, it has bubbles there for mixed use or business campus. And the applicant is coming in and wants to, so those aren't zoning codes. Those are basically conceptual. So a mixed use zone could include something such as business campus. But the way the annexation parcels work, uh, he doesn't, he's not proposing to use the portion that the town's comprehensive plan shows as business campus. He's not proposing to have that zoned as business campus. He wants to have it as a residential attached.
And it's not part of the existing, uh, what, what was intended when that future land use map was put together as what the zoning should be?
I, in this sense, it would, it's more of a conceptual idea of what it could be, but it's, since it's not zoned, it's not, it's open for discussion essentially.
Okay, and that same thing then applies to the mixed use.
Correct.
Conceptual. So we're talking.
Correct. And since the town doesn't have a mixed use zone per se, the, the zoning code, that's kind of what this discussion is now. It allows us a chance to say, well, what, what do we, what do we, what does the town think? Maybe what mixed use is. Right now, the applicant is proposing mixed use, meaning the residential attached and commercial zone. But he could have easily said, no, I want to put a, an office building in here as well as part of my, the mixed use category.
Well, if, if my memory serves me well, I believe that the applicant originally came in asking for a PUD. Am I not correct?
That is correct.
And then at some point in time, somebody talked them into putting in, into basically residential.
So the, so we've delved into what those conversations were with the previous planning staff. And uh, it, it's definitely all upfront. The uh, there are definitely PUD zones within the town of Monument, within many towns, of course, across Colorado, but it, the, the town development code that has been passed is perceived by planning staff and by the Planning Commission and Board of Trustees that approved it to be very, very strong. It has very robust and very well-defined uh, standards that relate to all categories, including residential attached. It's all laid out. So the height limits and setbacks and all the criteria are there. So the, the planning staff's per, per uh, thought or philosophy on that was to let the code do the work because the code is already very strong in those cases. If you try the PUD, then it's almost open for negotiation. So instead of saying, oh, it's a thirty-five foot hi- height limit, then the, the applicant could come say, well, let's stretch that. How about forty-five feet? Or the setbacks are in RA or your code says this, but now we can renegotiate all of that. So that, that's the thought on why it went from the PUD to, to residential attached because the code has just been passed in the last few years, and it's was perceived to be very strong, very robust in relation to all the different new zoning categories, including residential attached. So you can essentially trust your code to do your work for you when it comes to development. That's, that was the thought. That helps.
But it takes, once the RA is approved, then it takes, everything from there has this Planning Commission, Board of Trustees, the citizens, and have no, no more say in what's going to happen out there or express any more concerns about what's going to happen out there.
Not, not quite. It, so that the annexation agreements will uh, uh, restrict, could restrict, depending on what the annexation agreements say, as well as the, uh, there's a sketch plan associated with the annexation agreement that will show you things like what, what the applicant just showed, the types of land use, the densities, that kind of thing. That would be incorporated into any future Platts. The Platts would come before Planning Commission and uh, Board of Trustees for discussion on uh, if it complies with uh, the original concept for the, like the densities and all that kind of thing. So you'd be able to have input at that point. And Sheila, if I'm missing anything on that, Sheila might be able to add any, anything in on that, but that, that would be some of the review that would still take place. I don't know if you have anything to add, Sheila?
Well, right, what he's saying. So if you want, if you go with the conventional zones, the set zoning that they're offering here, and you want concessions, this is the time you make them. When it's a straight zoning, at the annexation, you include them in the annexation agreement. If during a PUD, you do it during the PUD process and it gets a recorded zoning, then they come back to you with the PUD site plan or plans, however the wording is here. So there is one process taken out. If you go to a conventional zone versus a PUD, and that's that site plan process. The other is just, you still get to see the plat. Um, you can ask for things at that time, but if they're in conformance, they don't necessarily have to give them to you.
I guess my concern, my concern, first, I think we need to annex. I'm, I'm certainly not question. If, if, if town of Monument does not have some control over that, God only knows what we're going to get in future years on there. The applicant has an investment and the applicant uh, is not going to let that investment just sit there. So something's going to happen. So I, I'm not against annexation. But I am certainly concerned at this point and based one I've heard from the community. I'm concerned that they keep, we keep talking about an annex agreement. But we don't know all the details of that agreement. We know if we want to do an RA, we know what the developer, uh, I mean, the applicant is proposing. But that agreement is going to be made and solidified subsequent to the meeting that we're having tonight where we're wanting to know more of the details and express more concerns about some of what is going on. And I, I don't know how, I'll be very personal about it. I don't, I don't know how we resolve the matter in a matter that gives the people and gives this Planning Commission the op- opportunity to have a voice as things move forward. And at the same time, I understand that the applicant has an investment in, in the way that they're working, their investment is, is not necessarily in agreement with what the people. And certainly, one of the things that I've heard from a couple of people is, could the applicant, could the owner, could, could we annex this? And then the applicant meet with the people just as we had within the last year and a half. It's been, there was a tremendous conversation between the developer and the citizens. And that conversation ended up with everybody being very pleased. Uh, and I think the town manager will, will agree with that. I don't think there's anybody that, well, I shouldn't say that, but I think we should annex, but I think that at this point in time, we need to have more control over what's going in there because when I say control, understand commercial, and this is the gateway to Monument. But there's a lot of residential up there. How far do we expect people to have to travel to be able to get basic goods and services for their home? There's nothing up there anywhere. We need commercial retail development in the city for a number of reasons. We got more residential than we've got commercial retail available to people. And the comprehensive plan states very clearly, and I've stated this in so many meetings that people are getting tired of hearing me say it. Comprehensive plan says that residential will be subordinate to commercial or non-residential development. This is certainly not subordinate. So I'm not sure how we resolve that issue, but I, I I think mixed use. I think a consideration for PUD. Or I think that we should consider approving the annexation, but not the zoning.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. No, please.
This is Commissioner Aigle. I echo Commissioner Green's comments that we don't have an awful lot of information. I think we're kind of operating in the dark a bit here. And so I had a couple of questions, both for the town staff and for the applicant related to the annexation impact report. I don't see anything here that talks about how our response, if we've spoken to the police department, to the fire department, and what their comments are with this annexation. I, I agree with Commissioner Orson. I, I want to annex the land, but I want to make sure we have full understanding of what we're faced with as a community.
Maybe, oh, I can have the applicant respond to his conversations that you're asking about. The annexation agreements themselves, just to answer some of the, the question there. Those are part of what the board of trustees would actually vote to approve. So the, the thought and the process we've been through at this point is to get the, as Sheila just said, to get the zoning in place so it can be incorporated into those agreements so that the board of trustees can look at those as a whole. But I think it's sounding like the planning commission is thinking that even with that, even though you don't necessarily have the, the, I think the voting authority over, over the annexation agreement itself, you still would like to see where the applicant is in that part of the process. To answer things like, have you spoken to the school district and, and all that kind of thing? And then the police and, and fire? And it's like, I could see why you have some concerns on that. I can have David, the applicant, speak to some of that, if his discussions with, with other agencies on both sides. I don't know, Dave, if you want to answer that question. Because I know you, you have questions of the school district.
Yeah, come on up. The, in terms of fire response, we're already inside all of the fire department's districts, and they've just merged a couple of the fire districts. We've not had a conversation with the police department since we submitted the original annexation petition. That conversation with the police department and the state patrol covered how law enforcement wouldn't, would continue to occur on the interstate and what the response times would be up into that area. But we've not talked to them since that early conversation.
Okay. One other question related to the, to the flagpole, annexation along I-25. You talk about Colorado State Patrol agreeing that they would handle the law enforcement of that segment.
Yes.
What type of liability does the town of Monument have for any maintenance related to that?
It remains the property and the maintenance responsibility of the Colorado Department of Transportation.
And you have that in, in writing or is that?
It's, it's, I don't have it in writing, but that's the way it works.
Okay. I had a couple of quick questions for you then, if you don't mind. You mentioned that the RTA is doing some improvements on Beacon Light Road and that their plan is that they plan to pave that and to turn that, and then also put in a roundabout at that.
No, not a roundabout at that intersection. Turn lanes, widen the road, pave it to the south, lower the intersection there by some 12 to 14 feet over where it is today. That's about site distance and making that intersection safer from being able to see over the rise where that intersection is on, on county line road. But yes, that's an RTA project, PPRTA project. Last night's election continued the RTA. The project is at about 80% complete in the design process, and they've shared that design with us. They've taken right-of-way from adjacent property owners to facilitate that, including us. And we've, that right-of-way has been provided so that it can facilitate those improvements, including drainage.
That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you. Thanks.
Um, I would like to go out on a possible motion to table this. And if the rest of the commission is in agreement, I would like to table this until the meeting in January because I know we're getting backlogged and I apologize for that. I, I think we have to see these other documents. And I'm sorry, I think staff has to bring them to us and we can add or subtract, but we can't write them while we're up here in a planning commission meeting. And I, I think it's going to take a couple of months to get everything together that, that I need to see. I don't want to speak for the others. And two months might also give you some time. I'm not happy with this density on that hill either. Perhaps staff could work with the applicant and look at some other things, maybe through a PUD. I don't know, you know? See, see what you can do perhaps and bring it to us.
Could I ask for more guidance? That's pretty open-ended. You're kind of asking us to come up with a plan without having guidance from you. I've heard what the public wants, but are you happy with the RA as far as maybe putting that into a PD? No RA, large lots, commercial? It's what is it that we're looking, you're looking for us to do?
Well, I'm taking it for myself now. I'm not speaking for the board. I would like, I would like to see much lower density lots there. And I'm, I'm not typically a low-density person, but when I look at what's further to the east and west, it, it just makes sense to me. And, you know, there, there may be something you want to do with that, with some clustering in a PUD. I don't know. But I would really like these other documents. And again, my opinion.
I would have to second Commissioner Trujillo exactly what Commissioner Green is saying. This seems like, again, we've ran into several times here on the board where a lot of the information is incomplete. In this case, like we're already identifying here, it's very conceptual. And that's a very hard word for us to swallow in the last couple of years that we've been on this board, simply because there's a lot of pieces that are not clear. And the, when it's built, we can't take it down. So the conceptual idea has got to be very clear in relation to what it is. Here, I think we're looking at two different problems. One, the zoning, and then two, or the annexation, and then the zoning. I don't think we can do the zoning simply because we don't know, again, as Commissioner Green had identified, what is in that annexation agreement. We mentioned from the third party that we have that information, but we have none of it here in front of us. So we're sort of blind. And that blinding part was a clear denial on behalf of not only this board, but also on the people here in this community. It's like a slap in the face that right now, we have nothing to make a decision on. And you want us to vote on it? It's a very clear vote on my behalf. It's a denial, not because of Mr. Whitehead. He's done everything correct. But I think when we brought that third party in, you left us with no decision here. And that no decision is very clear on the community. They want, they, they put the petition in front of us. It's very clear what their, their response is. But I think really realistically, we have nothing to even go and enforce or say, hey, Mr. Whitehead, this is in fact something that is good for Monument. On a personal note, when I look at the gateway to Monument, when I travel back and forth to Denver to Monument, and I looked at Larkspur and I look at the dark sky, I see, well, then when I come over that hill and I look at McDonald's, the truck stop, the actual individual area where we'd have the C dot there, that's where Monument starts. If I take away even more land, because again, as it was mentioned earlier by the public, the night sky is the key part of this town. We continually fight to go, and when I go to the gym at four, five o'clock in the morning, and I drive around the town and I look at that night sky and, and I go to Mr. Foreman at least once a quarter and say, hey, that building is not in compliance. There are things that concern me, and that is one of them. We're stripping away from that entity of Monument. Okay? That would be really, Mr. Whitehead, my concern is that night sky and how it affects our community, because our community is very tight-knit. And I think realistically, it has to be considered. But at this point, my opinion, the zoning is not clear in relation to what it would be. Does annexation is not clear on what was agreed to or what was presented to the county commissioners in El Paso County? There's a lot of pieces here that are not complete that we can make a educated decision to say, this is what we approve for the city or for the town of Monument.
With the annexation agreement, it has not been drafted. We were waiting for input from the commission to add to it. But what we can do, there, there's a draft, but there's nothing in it.
Well, and
Substantial.
But even if, if we had a draft, because again, now we know what is the foothold, what, where are we at?
Okay.
And that's really the problem here. And that's why I would, I completely agree with Commissioner Green's idea of, let's push this back till January and let's discuss it. What we can have working groups, if the town manager and yourself would like to bring the planning commission in, all about it. But again, I think the picture is incomplete because we're not seeing exactly how it affects the populace and then bring in the community to say, hey, how, what do you believe needs to be in there? Me, I live on Promontory Point, and I live over on the whole south side of Monument. I don't know what they need up north, and I'd love to hear what the public has to say about that. But I think it is an incomplete product in relation to what has actually been drafted in that draft format, because it may be completely different for me on the south side of the town.
Well, what we can do is take the input we've heard tonight and from the board on Monday and throw some stuff in there for a draft for you.
Thank you, ma'am. It, it could be December, but I would, I would say, I would say that the information, again, I don't know what's in the package. And again, in a draft format, if there is a draft format where we can expand upon, where we can identify where those agreements can be made with the annexation, what is, what is the applicant willing to go forth and actually produce to build more roads inside the town? Are they willing to do that? We don't, we don't know what they're willing to do. So I think that conversation is still needed within a working group or within the town. But I think that draft is essential. And I don't know what the timeline is. I, I'm just agreeing with what Commissioner Green had stated because there has to be time to digest that information.
Commissioner Oars? With all due respect to my two commissioners, Green and Trujillo, I, I think we would be very remiss to not at least approve the annexation. I believe, and staff helped me here, but I believe that we could achieve what you're wanting and what the owner came in originally with if we had an annexation with a zoning of PUD. They would then have to come forward and give us their plan, and we would then have the planning commission meeting. You would review it. We'd have the planning commission meeting. We'd have the citizens, and we go through the process. But I really think if we delay this thing, it's going to go on and on. But I think there's general agreement. We want the annexation. So if we put in a zoning, a PUD on it, it's going to achieve this coming back and greater discussion. And it's also going to maybe inspire the owner who originally came in with PUD to get with the community and see before they come forward. And I see her shaking her head, yes, coming forward with a plan that's more suitable to the people of the community.
Yeah, I guess, this is Commissioner Aigle. So in response to Commissioner Orson's question, is that true that we can, is PUD a viable option for us to accept the annexation and then to zone for PUD?
You have to zone eventually. It would be if you want to zone PUD, but the applicant doesn't necessarily have to accept that zoning and could withdraw. But you could, you could recommend approval of the annexation, send that forward to the board, not a recommendation of zoning yet until you're comfortable with it. We have that 90-day clause in the statute. I'm not as familiar with your code yet as to how the PUD process works to see how that all fine comes in together. I can say that I did talk to the attorney today about that possibility. Their recommendation would be to table both and to a date specific so that they can still run together because that gives the town and the applicant more of an opportunity to negotiate with that annexation agreement and the PUD so that both parties are in the same place when it gets to that final hearing with the board of trustees. Whether that's in a good place or a bad place, it's, it gives everyone the chance to negotiate equally. That would include you.
Thicker than most of the people up here. I'm not sure I fully understand what you said. Okay?
Okay, sorry. So you have your annexation agreement or your annexation, which brings the property into the town. You have your annexation agreement, which is the agreement between the town and the applicant on the different concessions between the both of you. Then you would have the PUD establishing the zoning. The PUD is tied to that annexation agreement in the different concessions. So your annexation is the stronger because it's the negotiation tool that we have. And so I think running them together, and so did the attorney, keeping the two together gives the negotiation power to the town and the applicant equally throughout this process. The annexation, the annexation agreement and the zoning concurrently.
Know the details of the annex agreement.
My understanding was the, and this was before my time. My understanding was to have the annexation agreement as part of this discussion, to find out what the public wanted, what the planning commission wanted, to go back in and put that into the annexation agreement while negotiating with the property owner. Then I understand that you wanted to see that annexation agreement. And if so, then you would table the items till you saw that annexation agreement. Once the planning commission was okay with it, moving forward to the board so that the board saw what the planning commission's recommendation was. That's my understanding of what the process was to be.
Go ahead.
There's a flaw with that because when I, I think the first time I went to a planning commission meeting, we had an annexation and I asked about the agreement and it never we had an annexation, and I asked about the agreement, and it never came back to us. We never saw it. I, if, if the property is not annexed tonight or rezoned, it remains in county zoning, which is just a low-density housing zoning. I mean, it's probably not going to suffer harm in two months. I, again, would say, you know, look at this zoning, bring us an annexation agreement. Let us look at it, and could we reschedule for January?
Say, make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we continue Monument, what are, what are we? Monument Ridge West and East, along with the proposed zoning categories until the January 11th meeting.
My Commissioner Trujillo, second.
Chairperson Welheemy, Welhelmy, sorry?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Trujillo.
And I'll add some comments to this, just in case the board cares. This seems like a simple solution. There needs to be more dialogue, more discussion, more working groups. This is a great start to that. And I think, as specifically stated here, staff also recommends using the present meeting to obtain PCs and public's input on the proposed annexation agreement. That's what started. It's beautiful. We've done that. This is, you know, good dialogue. You've heard from the public. They've taken their time. You've heard from the applicant. They've taken their time. I think their applicant has heard. There's a desire. Well, but you, so let me just speak. Okay, so in terms of you've heard from us, you've heard from the public, there's clearly a document missing from this consideration that we find to be important. And there, I think that's like just key to getting an annexation and zoning put together as the lawyer recommended, bundled up properly. And I don't want to proceed improperly. That's why I think it means more time as opposed to, well, in principle, we think annexation is great, but we're not agreeable here on zone. Applicants asking for these types of zones, there's been a suggestion for a PUD zone. This is, you know, this is a bit discombobulated. So that's why I'm voting to at least push it out. Again, we have winter coming. I'm not seeing this as an incredible delay. I appreciate your patience. I do. And so don't get me wrong on this. I think you're hearing from the community, it's going to be developed. It's just a matter of exactly what. This is good. This is progress. So that's my comment to this.
I'll continue with a roll call vote on the motion on the floor. Vice Chairperson Trujillo.
I try, again, also, am I going to say yes? I disagree with the motion that was presented that we delay with the criteria of, again, staff reviewed the subject application. Sir, I completely agree with you. We're on our fourth planner. Okay? We understand, we've learned a lot with our staff up here that you have here representing the town. We've learned a lot about how this works, and we learned a lot about how it actually sets up for the future of the residents. We want progress. We want buildings, but we want to make sure that it's done responsibly. So please give us that time, because we truly want you to develop that area. But we also want to make sure that it is compliant for my grandkids to be coming through Monument, and it's not looking like veil pass. Okay, that's the problem. So again, we're not trying to deny it, but we're trying to make sure that it is still developed in relation to that small-town fill. I would also say that inside section 18.01.40 implements the town's comprehensive plan. Continue to develop, maintain parks and open space systems. My other concern is that that whole northern end associated with the conservation land is key. Larksburg, Douglas County, El Paso County line. I have the unique opportunity to work for an organization that represents the wildlife in Colorado. And in doing so, I know exactly what's at cost there. And when I say that, one of the main concerns that I would say is that if you take it, they're never going to come back. It continues to actually affect the wildlife that we have in Colorado now. So that would be one of the things that I would definitely caution, because again, that cause and effect will cause a detriment to those herds that are out there on that western or in that I-25 corridor. Okay, I get it. But again, progress does happen. That's my only comment. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Hours?
About yes, and I'd like to say that I totally agree with Commissioner Terrio on the comments that he just made. And I'd like to also take the opportunity to speak to the owner and tell the owner that she looks very positive. And we really want to be able to work with you, to be able to develop the property and manage it works for the citizens and works for you, because you've got a financial interest that you've got to take care of. And I think that's what your big concern is. So thank you for your positive attitude.
Commissioner Green?
Yes, and I'll also comment, would somebody look into that item 22? That you're going to have your attorney look at. I'm not sure that belongs there.
Commissioner Egley?
No, and I don't want to be nitpicky, but we pushed this item from the October meeting to this meeting. And so I'm not sure that we benefit either the commission or the applicant by pushing it into January. I'd rather see that come back up in December.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
All right, again, thank you, applicant, both applicants who are here. Thank you for your time. And we will move on to the public comments for non-agenda town planning items. And so what's important here is that there's an opportunity, again, for the planning commission, to talk to the planning commission, to staff as well regarding planning-related items. So, and I'll just wait for some people to clear out. All right, so we have planning commission items, one second. And with that, just focus on what we, as a planning commission, deal with or what's in our purview. If you can, land use, development, these types of things. So for the audience here, if anyone would like to step up and make a public comment that's not on the, on the agenda, please do so now. Come on, let's do it.
Again, Kenneth Kimpel, 1615 St. Lawrence Way. Few comments real quick. Number one, thank you for postponing that, that vote. What I ask you to do is also, other data to collect is the county commissioners meeting on December 5th, when they review this annexation plan, because they have input. And then I'll get that information, and then also, please compare the zoning that the El Paso County has on this property as compared to what potentially, if it is annexed into town, what the zones are here, because they're drastically different. Like I mentioned before, RR5, that's five-acre lots, RS, you know, 20,000, that's different from what we would have here in ours. So compare those two as you look at that plan. More importantly, what I would like to bring up and bring to attention, and I'd really like to challenge this board, as we are going to challenge, hopefully, the future Board of Trustees to take a serious look at, is water usage. As we continually say, we're going to build more homes, more homes, more homes, stop at the grass, zero scape. We're stretching our water resource. So I would, I would seriously ask everyone to look at any future development that's approved, residential, commercial, instead of them putting in grass lots, make it zero scape to reduce the water reduction, because we're building homes like crazy here, when a lot of the stuff has been rezoned, when it wasn't rezoned for residential properties. That's a finite resource that we're looking at as our water. So I ask that you guys take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Come on up.
Thank you, Robin Wright, 19814 Doe Drive. One of the things I observed, just, and I don't know the answer, the solution to this, but it appears the planning and also the Board of Trustees, we allow, and even the community, we allow the developers to be the master integrator. And I come from a department of defense where we build giant weapon systems, and the contractors never the master integrator, because it'll always come out to their favor. And I see that happening, because the town of Monument, we only stretch so far. And so what we, the questions that happen up here are, what did you talk to the school? Wait, yeah, I talked to the school. They didn't want any more lands. We just gave them money. Oh, okay. Did you talk to Woodmore Water? Yep, they said we're good. So then you get these overlapping classics said that, okay, we're good there. Then this one's, okay, yeah, we're good there. So now we have all these competing for the resources, and it's, I'm not saying they're disingenuous. I'm just saying it will always work out to their favor, because they are the master integrator, and they're going to make it a self-fulfilling prophecy. So I don't know how to solve that or how to maybe make, you know, is Mr. Foreman, since he resigned from that director, we make him the master integrator? I don't know, but, but that's something to consider across everything. We're just taking everybody's word, and they may have a letter for it. But is, is Woodmore Water, are they integrating across? Like, there's so many competing things. There needs to be a bigger macro look. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's keep going. Anyone else in the, in the crowd? All right, seeing none, anyone online? Drew, I don't see any hands. Am I missing something?
Mr. Chairman, I have what you have. At this time, we have no hands.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'll just go and close the public comment for non-agenda town planning items and move on to reports, communications, and announcements. Let's go with staff first. Anyone? Anyone? Okay, commissioners? All right, I understand that our next meeting is December 14th at 6:00 PM, same location. And that's all I have, so we'll adjourn. Thank you.